Good evening, everybody. I call to order the Gladstone City Council meeting for November 9th, 2021 at 6:30 PM. Per the Governor's Executive Order 20-16 regarding compliance with Oregon's public meeting laws, the city of Gladstone is abiding by social distancing requirements during the coronavirus pandemic. This city council meeting will be conducted using a hybrid approach. Councillors who are comfortable with in-person meetings will be in the council chambers. Those that aren't will be in Zoom as well as all of the attendees. So please be patient as we try to work our way through this new format. The Zoom access instructions can be found on the meeting agenda. Members of the city council, staff, and the public all have access to this call, this meeting, excuse me. Public comment requests were accepted prior to noon today and were to include your topic and phone number. Tonight, we're going to start with a presentation on the Oak Lodge Governance Project, followed by the Consent Agenda, which includes approval of the city council meeting minutes of October 12th, 2021, approval of the September bank balances, budget report for periods ending September 30th, 2021, approval of the September check register, legal costs on projects, and the department head monthly reports for October 2021. Our regular meeting agenda includes Gladstone Police Department K-9 Vehicle Replacement, Ordnance 1513, amending the Gladstone Municipal Code, also referred to as the GMC, Chapter 8.12 Noise Control, to allow for variances to be considered by the city administrator, the Community Development Block Grant, also referred to as the CDBG, Intergovernmental Agreement, also referred to as an IGA, between Clackamas County and the city of Gladstone for ADA ramps in Gladstone, approval of an agreement between St. Vincent de Paul and Gladstone to distribute American Rescue Plan Act funds, referred to as ARPA, to the Gladstone residents, and a discussion with council on committee vacancy appointment process. Tammy, could you please call the roll?
Councillor Ripley.
Here.
Councillor Alexander.
Yes.
Councillor Tracy.
Present.
Councillor Hartman.
Here.
Councillor Todd. Councillor Garlington.
Here.
Mayor Stimple.
Here, thank you. Could everyone please stand for the flag? Thank you. Are there any agenda additions or corrections?
I have nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Wonderful, so let's get started with the presentation.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we're going to have a short presentation. I believe Mitra is going to go through a PowerPoint, and I believe Valerie is also with her and Joseph. Oak Lodge Governance Project is an analysis of different governing options for the Oak Grove Jennings Lodge area. This is a Phase 1 of discussions about the different options, and they wanted to provide an overview of what their findings were in the report.
Hello.
Hello, welcome.
Thank you so very much. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Let's see, it says I am not able to, let's see, here we go.
You should be able to now.
Okay, great, thank you. And here we go. So my name is Mitra Anusha Ravani, and Valerie, you want to introduce yourself?
Sure, I'm Valerie Chapman. I'm part of the Steering Committee of the Oak Lodge Governance Project.
And we are super grateful for the opportunity to share this information with you this evening. And while what we're sharing doesn't necessarily directly affect the city of Gladstone proper at the moment, we do include discussions of Gladstone's current UGMAs. And as the major geography adjacent to the city, Gladstone does stand to be affected either directly or indirectly by choices present within the unincorporated area. So we are really excited about this opportunity to share, connect, and answer any questions that councillors may have. So the report that our group commissioned and are presenting tonight, the very formally titled "Analysis of Governance Options for the Oak Grove Jennings Lodge Area," Phase 1 of Discussions About Governance in Oak Lodge, has data presenting comparative analysis amongst multiple governance options. And we are actually really proud of this because this is the first time in our area's history that there has been data across multiple options to show what's really possible within the Oak Lodge area. So I know that some of you are probably pretty new to learning about our existence. So I'd like to give just a quick overview about who we are and how we got here. So first, our team is comprised of 10 individuals. We're all volunteers, and we've been working together anywhere from one and a half to two and a half years. We all love this area, we love our community, and we love, you know, being here. Now, we don't obviously represent the total breadth of diversity and experiences within Oak Lodge, but our team does span generations, orientations, ethnicities, and numbers of years lived here. Some of us have generational roots, and some of our team planted here within the past five years. And amongst us, there are two things that fundamentally unite us. One is our deep affection for the Oak Lodge community. And the second is the abiding belief that insofar as our local government is concerned, Oak Lodge can do better. Now, the following is a list of examples from recent history that all of our members have been involved in, and frankly, each of these bullet points deserves its own presentation as to what we found inherently problematic with them. And you can read more about our perspective on our website, oaklodgegovernanceproject.org, where we link to the Clackamas review pieces that we wrote about each of these issues and how we think that our area deserved better government representation in each of these examples. So, so, we, we are, we came together over these shared issues, knowing that we could do better, and we wanted data to support this. So in order to get data, we needed money, and we reached out to Metro, where we applied for a planning and development grant, which we were awarded in the amount of $100,000 towards a consultant-led study exploring the possibility and general feasibility of additional governance options. Now, while our team knew what questions we wanted answered with this study, we wanted to make sure that we were on the same page as those within the community. And so we sent out a survey, and overwhelmingly, the feedback we received was that folks really wanted two questions answered. First is if we're going to change, how much is this change going to cost us? And second is if we have to potentially spend more money, what are we going to get for those added dollars? Now, there have been previous incorporation efforts and discussion in the past, and none in recent years have gone very far, often hinging on the speculation that change is just too expensive. So we set out to answer this question first, knowing that understandably, this is where folks would go when starting these conversations again. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Valerie to talk about the scope of work a little bit.
Valerie?
Okay, thank you. So in preparing for the study, the Steering Committee had to determine three options that would be studied, the boundaries of the study area, and which of the many services that would be included in the study for comparison. And we had to do this, we had to choose these, knowing that we had a limited amount of money for the study. Next. So the three options were to remain unincorporated, to annex into the city of Milwaukee, or incorporate into a new city. Now, the financial constraints said that we had to use just three options. Milwaukee was chosen to model annexing in because Milwaukee and Oak Lodge area already share some of the same service districts and are of a similar size. I just want to be really clear, there was no intention to slight Gladstone in any way. Next. So here's the study boundary areas. You can see that the boundaries go north to the city of Milwaukee, south to the city of Gladstone, and west to the river. And east, you see that it follows the city of Milwaukee, the Milwaukee Urban Growth Management Area, the unincorporated Clackamas County, Gladstone's UGMA, and to the city of Gladstone. We want to thank in particular the city of Gladstone for allowing the study to include portions of your urban growth management area. This allowed the entire area of Jennings Lodge to be part of the study, which will be helpful as that part of the community discerns what it would like to do in the future. Next. So in deciding which services to use for comparison, we chose to keep the fire district, the parks district, and Oak Lodge Water Services District the same, because people are overall satisfied with the services that they receive from those districts. We modeled differently the other areas of service, police, stormwater, transportation, community development, and government administration. And I'm going to go back to Mitra.
Great. So, starting with the biggest takeaway from 123 pages was that, that new governance options appear financially feasible. So what this communicates is that Oak Lodge genuinely, right out of the gate, has options. We have data that demonstrates annexation or incorporation are both financially feasible. So if this community should collectively decide to consider further exploration into moving beyond our unincorporated status, we have data that gives us the springboard to move into those conversations with data, facts, driving those conversations, and not speculation. So let's talk about what happens in a broad sense to Oak Lodge property taxes under these modeled scenarios. And I'm going to put a little bit of a mental asterisk here. There are a lot of numbers and analyses that go into these very broad assumptions, and I am choosing to forego them for tonight's presentation. However, they are all in the study, which is in your packet, and if you have questions about them after our presentation, please feel free to ask. So how much is this going, how much is change going to potentially cost folks? So in order to estimate the level of service which sets the parameters for the estimates, the study based most of its calculations on the level of service provided by the city of Milwaukee, which gave us a little bit more of an apples-to-apples comparison in terms of annexation and incorporation. So that said, in future phases of study, it would be frankly really helpful to analyze and include the city of Gladstone in this analysis, because unlike the city of Milwaukee, Gladstone provides its own fire and its own parks. And having this scenario modeled under both an incorporation and annexation scenario would be pretty necessary information for earnest conversations to proceed. So here, under the annexation scenario, our property taxes would see a net increase of about 15.8%. Then, under the incorporation scenario, which is just a fictional city created for this study, the calculated increase is about 4.5%. And I would also like to note that the higher property tax level for Milwaukee is a reflection of Milwaukee providing more services, and the hypothetical city providing fewer. And in reality, the real tax level for incorporation would be whatever residents decide. And the first example for 150,000 assessed value home is actually pretty typical for the area. So for a typical Oak Lodge home, annexation would cost a household about $36 more per month, while incorporation in this scenario, this fictional city that's created for the study, would cost about $10 more per month. Now, the second example is what modeled in the report, and it's an assessed value of $350,000, which is definitely above the Oak Lodge median, and this example would be a relatively expensive home, expensive home if we were taking today's market value. So I'd like to share, now this slide is one of my favorites, because it helps give context for all of this. Now, this chart is taken from the report, shows the predominant tax rates in the cities in Clackamas County. And included in the chart are both our incorporation and annexation scenarios. The incorporation scenario, which is roughly in the middle of the pack, is labeled here as new city, at about $19 per thousand. And the annexation scenario is Milwaukee at about $21 per thousand. And then you can also see the city of Gladstone, it's just under $20 per thousand. Now, what's really notable to me is that our current tax rate, it's indicated by the red arrow, is $18 per thousand. So current property taxes are about average, in the middle of the pack, when we're comparing to other cities. So right now, right now, Oak Lodge is currently paying city-level property taxes and pretty darn arguably not receiving city-level services. So what we're taking from this is that, yes, different governance options are going to affect taxes, but the differences aren't huge for an individual tax bill. And if, in this study, we're talking about a range from $18 to $21 per thousand. So I frankly think this frees us by establishing some baseline financial feasibility to have substantial conversations about our collective future. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Valerie.
Okay, Mitra. So if we are asking residents to think about paying more property tax to become a city, one of the questions that inevitably comes up is what are we going to receive for that money? But by becoming part of a city, whether we choose to annex or incorporate into our own new city, we feel we will have greater representation in our local governance and more influence as a result. Secondly, by becoming part of a city with increased representation, we would have increased opportunity to share policies, to shape policies, that reflect the local community needs, hopes, and dreams. Next.
Hold on a second. I don't know why it's... Shoot. Valerie, keep talking, I'll catch up.
Okay, first, we would like, I'll take just a moment to say, here we go. What do we have right now? If we take the total Clackamas County population, about 426,500 people, we're represented by five commissioners, that's about 83,500 people per commissioner. So all of our commissioners are elected by the county electorate, and only one of these five commissioners actually comes from our area, that is Commissioner's service. The others come from Malala, Sandy, and Lake Oswego. This means that there's just one perspective coming from our area. Next. If, if the entire Oak Lodge area were annexed into Milwaukee, it would swell the city's population, almost double it, 48,000. There are five city councillors. This means there would be about one councillor for every 9,600 people. And all of those councillors would need to live in the Milwaukee/Oak Lodge area, which would mean an increased understanding of the area and a variety of perspectives, and greater influence for the people who live here. Next. And if the entire area then was to incorporate into one new city with five councillors and 27,800 people, you can see that residents for council then would be about 5,500. And this would involve people, all of them, all of these councils living within the Oak Lodge area, which would increase the perspectives and the opportunity for the area residents to have influence in how their city was shaped. Clearly, becoming part of a city through annexation or incorporation would increase the representation and what we think of as the clout of the residents of Oak Lodge. Next. So we have lots of ideas in Oak Lodge, like many people do, about the future of our area. Developing and acting on a shared community vision would be a positive, non-financial benefit of becoming part of a city. Our county commissioners must look at the needs of a whole county, and we're aware of that. It's exceedingly difficult for a small section of the county to develop around its own unique vision when it is not incorporated. In a city, residents could plan not only for more affordable housing, but for the design standards and the zoning that would help to create a neighborhood that we'd be pleasant to live in, like the Park Avenue Community Project hoped to do, rather than just building apartments on a busy highway. In a city, residents could choose to bring in the voices that are not normally heard, those of young families, students, renters, immigrants, and others. Equity is more attainable with a localized government. And in a city, residents can make livability policies on a local level. For example, policies to save trees, build parks, provide cluster housing, and to become more sustainable and adaptable for the future. Becoming incorporated would provide us with more options. Back to Mitra.
So there are really four big key conclusions. One, you've heard me say it already, that change is financially feasible. Two, it's that level of service is really variable, and that that is within control if we choose to incorporate within, I mean, that's within control of the folks who are choosing to live within a new city. The third, and I think this is really important for the councillors to hear, is that subareas within the study area may want different things, and that's okay, perhaps even expected. It makes sense to us that perhaps those north of Courtney may feel more closely aligned with the city of Milwaukee, and that those south of Jennings and within the Gladstone UGMA identifies more closely with Gladstone. In no way, shape, or form do we think that there's going to be 28,000 people knocking on, you know, the mayor's door, asking, please let us in. We don't think that everybody's going to choose to do the same thing, and it's really up to those of us who live in Oak Lodge to collectively decide what conversations we'd like to pursue. And then finally, that there are really many, many considerations for us to take into account as we continue this conversation. I mean, financial feasibility is just a part of it, but really and truly, identity, vision, and values should be what drives most of the conversations about what we want our government to look like and what we want it to do for us moving forward. And with that, I'll pass it back to Valerie.
So now that our big study is completed, there's a lot of work to do. So the next steps are to initiate community discussions that will reveal new questions that need to be researched. We will also continue to be doing outreach and engaging people in our community, in the larger community, so that we can all be in the dialogue. Next. And the Oak Lodge Governance Project considers that our place in this is to help with research and outreach, to initiate community discussions, so that the community discussion, the community through their own discussions can determine what way they would like to go. So the community discussions will drive any new research efforts that are needed, and I think we're all pretty excited about this opportunity now, just to be sharing this information, getting those community conversations started. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I'm really surprised that it's only 4.5% increase to become incorporated. That's a lot lower than what I think a lot of people were expecting. So councillor Garlington, do you have any questions?
I was just wondering if you could go back for one second and tell me again, what are the three items you would be keeping within the county?
Turn your microphone on.
Oh, sorry. What, what three items you would keep within the county? It was the fire, the water, and what was the third?
North Clackamas Parks and Rec, and those actually are all independent service districts.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Alexander.
No, Chris, thanks.
Councillor Hartman.
Don't have any questions, I just want to commend you both and your whole team on putting this together. It's really inspiring to see all this work you've done and how you're coming out to fight for your community. So I just want to say thank you, great job.
Councillor Tracy.
No questions, thank you, Mayor.
Councillor Ripley.
No questions.
All right, well, thank you very much, and I'm sure we'll see you in the future when you have more outreach opportunities, so good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
All right, so the first thing on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. Are there any questions or concerns? Would someone like to make a motion then? Do I have a second? Motion was made by councillor Tracy and seconded by councillor Garlington. Do we have any additional questions or concerns? I don't see anything. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Councillor Ripley.
Yes.
Councillor Alexander.
Yes.
Councillor Tracy.
Hi.
Councillor Hartman.
Hi.
Councillor Garlington.
Yes.
Mayor Stimple.
Yes, Consent Agenda has passed. Do we have any correspondence?
We do not have any correspondence, but we do have several written comments that need to be submitted into the record later in the evening under Business from the audience.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on. A couple of things before we start. First, for those folks that would like to speak, the deadline to accept comments was noon today. As a reminder, we allow three minutes for public comment. Second, as I do before every meeting, I would like to say a few words regarding the city council. The most important limitation we have sitting here is that we are representing the citizens of Gladstone, not our own personal agendas and beliefs. There have been many times when a decision being made doesn't align with what we would like personally, but have made a decision based on what is best for the city as a whole. That does not mean our personal beliefs have changed, just that the city's needs were more important. As we discuss and consider matters, there are laws and rules we have to use as the basis of our decisions. These start at the federal and state level, then filter down to our city's comprehensive plan, city charter codes, and ordinances. We do not have the luxury of randomly making decisions, but instead have to be consistent and take a path that is defensible. We appreciate you taking the time to participate in this process. We will have everyone's phones muted and tell it is your time to speak. If we're not able to mute your phone, please do so on your end. My goal is to keep this meeting respectful and engaging, so please help me do that. First item is number seven, Gladstone Police Department K-9 Vehicle Replacement Staff.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I believe tonight, we are going to have Sergeant Travis Hill take you through a presentation with Chief Schmerber to talk about a new type of vehicle that the city would like to purchase for the K-9 program.
Hi, good evening, good evening, Mayor and Council, City Council. Typically, the police department has placed vehicle replacements on the consent agenda that's accompanied by all the documentation. Because the police department is recommending a change in vehicle platform that is different than what's been done in the past, we want to share our recommendations of moving to an F-150 police platform versus the SUV-type platform that Gladstone has been using. If you remember, in 2019, in 2019, the police department implemented a vehicle replacement policy for the purpose of ensuring the department's fleet is well-maintained, is the right size, and meets the needs of daily work, while also being good stewards of public money. Sergeant Travis Hill, who was also the department's fleet supervisor, is joining me in this presentation to explain why we recommend the change and the benefits of this change. And finally, this recommendation does not require additional funding as the vehicle is fully budgeted, but because it's a change and something different, we want to make sure that we share it for your awareness and making this recommendation. So I'll turn it over to Sergeant Hill.
Hello, Mayor and councillors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and thank you, Tammy, for coordinating the PowerPoint. If we can go to the next slide, please? Excuse me. So the Gladstone Police Department's K-9 vehicle is currently a 2014 Ford Explorer. That vehicle is at its end of life with 115,000 miles and 14,718 engine hours, and that was about two months ago when those numbers were taken. In the last couple of years, we've completed over $4,800 in repairs and maintenance. And a couple of years prior to that, there was about $7,000 of work done. So in the last approximately four years, there's been over $10,000 of work done on this particular vehicle. As the chief mentioned, we've done an assessment, and the vehicle scored a 31 on the Gladstone Police Department Fleet Replacement Scoring System. And just for reference, under 20, the vehicle would be in excellent condition, 20 to 22, good condition, 23 to 30, it would qualify for replacement, and then 31 or more, it needs immediate consideration. As a dedicated K-9 vehicle, our primary concern is the safety of the dog, as well as the dog handler. One of the major issues that we had with the $4,800 repair was the air conditioning system was failing, which could be very dangerous to the dog. Since we've determined that this vehicle's ready to be replaced... Since we've determined that this vehicle's ready to be replaced, we started looking at potential options and we started looking at the supply chain issues that I'm sure you all are experiencing personally, and I know the city's experiencing. Vehicles are taking longer, longer to order and be received and as well as all the equipment that's necessary. I take this very personal to try and be a good steward of the, our citizens' tax dollars and to try and do things that are going to be cost effective. And I think that making the purchase now before this vehicle gets more expensive is going to be in our best interest. Next slide, please. So for our K nine vehicle, this list here is some of the equipment. Not everything that K nine officer carries is included. There's additional gear that Officer Olson carries. But as you can see, we have the K nine equipment that he carries with him for training as well as the day-to-day equipment for responding to calls for service. And all of this gear, one little piece at a time, adds up to be quite a bit, a lot of stuff. Next, next slide, please. This is just one portion of the interior of that vehicle. As you can see, all of the equipment here, that isn't even everything on that list. There's certain things that Officer Olson has been unable to carry currently. In that top rack, you can see if he needs something, he's going to have to like unload half of what's in there to be able to get to what he might need. There's drawers in that vault there that can't even be accessed without unloading everything that's in the very back part there. So, next slide, please. As I'm sure you've all seen, the Ford Explorer platform has been used for many years locally, regionally and nationally as a police vehicle. But over time, specialty units such as SWAT, K nine, special investigations have determined that these vehicles aren't really adequate to haul the required equipment, as you saw in the prior slide. As we've prepared to replace this vehicle, we started to look at larger options that would meet those needs. Next slide, please. Some of the options we looked at were pickups, large SUVs, and then we also looked at the current platform, the Dodge Durango that we've been using for regular patrol operations. Looking at the Ram fifteen hundred pickup and the Ford F one fifty, the Chevy Tahoe and the Ford Expedition, you see the price differences. Of those four, the F one fifty is the most purpose-built specifically, that would most adequately meet the needs for the K nine program. And I can explain a little more on that on the next slide, please. So, the Ram fifteen hundred is a little less expensive vehicle, but it's not purpose-built for police work. They do have a police option, but it's more of a utility truck that has vinyl floor that that you can try to make it into a police vehicle. The F one fifty has the increased handling, suspension, braking capability. And it also has like the seat bolsters or custom to accommodate for the duty belt and it's got the equipment installed to be able to easily wire the police, all the law enforcement lighting and all the other equipment required. In that lower left picture, you can see the cargo drawers. That system there is about a seven thousand dollar drawer system, but as I mentioned about trying to be a good steward of the public's money, I researched and found an alternate drawer system that you'll see on the next slide here in a moment, where it's much less expensive, that would equally accommodate that equipment that we need to transport and secure. Next slide, please. So this is some of the equipment that would be required. Most of the equipment that would be required to get this vehicle in service. The K nine platform up on the top there, that decked system is the drawer system there on the right in that white picture truck that would be able to store and accommodate all that gear and then also a locking aluminum tonneau cover that would roll over the top of that, where the K nine bite suit and other equipment could rest on top of there. Another advantage of a pickup platform is the capability for towing. We have our incident command and firearms trailer as well as, if you haven't seen it around, we recently have purchased, purchased the radar reader board and we've been moving out around town through all the neighborhoods. Every one of these items, I've gone through and scrutinized the price and have been trying to get, locate the best available pricing. I know right now the decked system has a ten percent sale going on and as we move forward on this project, I would continue to sharpen the pencil and do the very best we could do to make this, to get the most bang for the buck for the citizens of our city. Next slide, please. The vehicle, projected vehicle purchase price would be about thirty five thousand six hundred dollars with the, all the necessary equipment, lighting, everything that was on that prior slide, just under twenty one thousand dollars for a total price of just under fifty six thousand five hundred dollars. Just to compare, the most recent Durango build for regular patrol operations that doesn't require a specialty dog cage was fifty two thousand six hundred and twenty-eight dollars. So we're looking at about a thirty eight hundred dollar difference to be able to have that purpose-built vehicle. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Sergeant Hill. Again, just closing this, the reason why we're bringing this to you, it's new, it's different. It's something that Gladstone hasn't seen. There are pickups in use for patrol use in parts of this county. I think West London and Oregon City have a truck they use. So the vehicle is, is used for patrol functions too, along with the K nine. It is a little bit more, but we do expect the, this vehicle to last as long as the working life of the K nine. I want to repeat that, the working life of the K nine. So K nine's only can hold up for so long with their hips and everything else as far as being in good working condition. So we anticipate this both meeting both those needs, so, and also with the equipment. So at this point, our recommendation is to move forward with this project. We've done a lot of research on it. We feel very confident. Again, we're not trying to be trendsetters here in Clackamas County or anything, but we are, we are looking for the best possible option. And we think this is it. So I want to thank you. This is what we're recommending. So I'll go ahead and turn it back home. Thank you.
Jackie, anything else?
I also want to point out that this does exceed my spending authority, which is the second reason why it's come before you tonight. Anything over fifty thousand dollars, even if it's budgeted, has to be approved by the city council. But no, we have completed our presentation and we just need a motion to move ahead and order the vehicle.
All right. Council Garlington, any questions?
No, I only have one small comment because the drawer systems that you-
I, I can't hear.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Okay, go ahead.
So the drawer system that you had in the back of the one pickup and then you said that you were going to use this other system. You know, I, I think that if it was me, I would just second check that because if it's something that's not going to work, I think you're better off not being mad at the truck every day that you have to go out there and find something rather than getting what is going to work in the first place. Just my two cents. Otherwise, I think it's a great presentation and I-
I could, I could speak to that. There are some folks that I've talked to that have been utilizing this, this system. And of course, we would double check, triple check before we actually place the order and make sure that we did the right, the right tool for the job, so to speak. The point I was attempting to make was that we, you know, we could have gone just with what the Ford recommendations were and gone line item by line item and not scrutinized, but I've just been trying to do, make, knowing that this does cost a little bit more than the Durango, I'm doing my very best for you, for citizens, for the police department to make sure that we are being good stewards and we're doing the best to make sure we, we're not looking for the cheapest product. We're looking for the best product that's going to meet our needs now and into the future.
Right. And I, and I hear what you said, what you're saying, and I appreciate that a lot. And I just want you to know that I also understand that if you don't have a closet big enough to hold all your coats, you got to get rid of some of your coats to get a bigger closet. So that's what I want you to do.
Thank you, thank you, Councilor.
Okay, thank you.
Council Alexander.
No, I just appreciate all the research you did on the prices and, and the discounts you could get by partnering with other people, other cities and so forth. So I appreciate that. I think it'll work out well.
All right, Council Hartman.
Thank you. And yes, thank you for this presentation and all the research that you both did. I just have one clarifying question. If we get this new vehicle, then this patrol will be able to go out and other patrols not, even if it's not K nine related. And I only ask that because looking at the numbers, we've only had a hundred and twenty-three deployments over the past thirty-four months. It's an expensive car if it's only going out for that, you know, little over a hundred times. I just am curious if you could clarify that this vehicle will now be able to do additional patrols, not just K nine related.
Yes, Councilor, thank you. I think that's a great question for everybody to, to hear the answer to. Yes, this vehicle is patrol. It's, it, the function is a patrol vehicle. The, the truck is for the equipment and for the K nine itself. There, there's no difference of what this truck can do versus what the Durango can do and what we're currently using out on the street for patrol. So it's, it's, there's really no, no change outside of the vehicle size.
Okay, just making, I just wanted to make sure. I was like, wow, it's a really expensive dog.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Thank you again. Thanks.
All right, Council Tracy.
No, I appreciate the presentation. The diligence is done. I guess the only question I have for Travis and Chief is are we looking at inflated figures now for numbers or, or are we set with a set number? I'm understanding what I'm following in the automobile industry is that we're seeing five to eight to twelve percent premiums based on chip deficits for computer chips. So Chief, is this a number that's kind of set in stone for us because we're buying a professional vehicle as opposed to a consumer product? Would this number be reflected as being different, let's say, six months ago?
One of the, one of the benefits that we have is, as a municipal agency, we have access to the Oregon, the state of Oregon procurement vehicle procurement pricing, which is, the prices are set, they're bid on at the beginning of the the year by vehicle vendors throughout the region. And the price is quoted. There's no like additional dealer markup or anything like that. It's not, it's different than purchasing as a civilian. The actual MSRP on this particular vehicle is, it exceeds forty eight thousand dollars. But the actual quoted price and with the appropriate equipment and everything, like the tow, tow package and all that is thirty-five eight fifty-seven and that's set. And we would be able to order that now or three months from now and it would be the same price. The only thing would be is when they roll over the model year.
Okay, I think, I think that's going to be important for our folks that, yes, you're buying it on the procurement system with the state of Oregon's prices are set. So there, we're looking at actual dollars and selecting what this vehicle would cost for value. I just want to make sure that somebody doesn't say, why aren't you waiting a year or waiting six months with the potential of some of these vehicle prices going down in the new car price mark, or market price. So thank you for that. That's, that's a clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Councilor.
Council Ripley.
No questions.
All right. Do we have any citizens that wanted to speak?
We do not.
All right. So anything else from staff?
Nothing further.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion that we replace vehicle fourteen oh seven with a twenty twenty-two Ford F one fifty pickup.
Do I have a second? Motion was made by Council Alexander, seconded by Council Garlington. Do we have any other questions or concerns? I don't see any. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilor Alexander.
Yes.
Council Tracy.
Hi.
Council Hartman.
Hi.
Council Garlington.
Yes.
Council Ripley.
Yes.
Mayor Stimple.
Yes, you guys are getting a new vehicle. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is item eight, ordinance one five one three, amending the Gladstone Municipal Code, also referred to as the GMC. Chapter eight point one two, noise control to allow for variances to be considered by the city administrator staff.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. This item comes before you tonight. As you recall, a couple of months ago, we had a request from a citizen on a noise variance to host a Halloween party. And it seemed frivolous that we had to take it through a process where it elevated to the city council for approval. That night, the city council approved the noise ordinance and then directed staff to bring back an amendment to our municipal code that would allow these to be considered administratively. This was assigned to the police department and as you can see in your packet, nothing is very simple. So the Gladstone Municipal Code is very antiquated. So you see a lot of new verbiage and strike throughs. But I'm going to have Chief Schmerber go through a little bit of the history that led into the current wording in this to really try to streamline the process. And it also allows the city council to not be in the business of having to approve noise ordinances amendments, but if something is not approved administratively, the applicant would have the ability to appeal it to the city council. So Chief, do you want to summarize some of the main changes in the ordinance amendment?
Yes, I, I will. Thank you. Can you, can everybody hear me still?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Some of the, really what we did was we, we streamlined it as, as administrative best says and, and clarified some language and cleaned it up so it's easier understood. We went through some confusion when this original one came, came about with regards to is a variance stated, is a variance not needed? However, we looked at, we had the opportunity where we looked at the ordinance overall, we looked at probably a little over a dozen ordinance from different cities as, as we move forward with this. From not only communities in Washington County, but communities in Clackamas County and, and over in central Oregon, who were really landed on Ben's ordinance as using it as a template because it really mirrored what Gladstone had already done. So one of the, one of the biggest components that I see is we're really focusing on distance. Not only the decibels, but we're really focusing on distance and we're using that two hundred and fifty foot margin so that, so that we can use a combination of both. If we don't have access to a, a device to measure, we can, we can go with the distance. So and it's, it's fully operational there. And the other thing is the equity piece and the guidelines for allowing or denying a permit. And so it's, it's outlined, so systems are in place and we mirrored the special events systems that we're already conducting and doing so that we can track and, and continue to push that forward. So when we do either consider to grant or deny, we have all that information. And if we do deny and it gets appealed, you would have that information to fall back on and, and make your own decisions based on that. I think those, those are the, those are the biggest changes besides really- changes besides really shortening up the ordinance to say the same thing as what it really did before. So just mirrored and clarified and, and brought it all together. I don't think I'm missing anything else on this. So really, those are the significant changes. And it's all outlined. It should be fairly clear for any community member that is looking to get a variance to do that. Plus, we have systems in place now that we can, we can follow through on and monitor. What we've done with this previous one is, as you can tell on some of the guidelines, is that, you know, if in the future this person wants to have another, this resident wants to have another variance, but we get complaints, we followed up with those complaints. So we, we're putting systems together now that in the future we can track them. So in this case, we actually got the complaints, pulled the case number, so it's completely trackable forever. And so we're working with City Hall on how to track that even more. So, so hopefully we get redundant, redundant information so that nothing slips through the cracks. Because noise can be, noise is, is a problem. I mean, people get very upset over, over, over unnecessary noise. So want to make sure we're doing it right. Jackie, I hope I covered everything.
Yeah, I think that that summarized what we're doing. And because this is an ordinance, the city council will need to do a first and second reading. If it's approved by all of you tonight, you can do your second reading. Otherwise, we would carry it over to the next city council meeting.
All right, Counselor Garlington, any questions?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Counselor Alexander.
You say something about a, do you have a sound measurement device? Or would the city need one? Or is that something you have or you need? Or have you used it before?
Yeah, that's a great question, Counselor. We do have one. It no longer works. It's very old. And so we've already researched, they're four to $600. We have the budget within, within our program to, to purchase that. What we're looking for right now is a training on that new equipment. So that's already in the works. But again, the bonus to that is, we fall back on, on the feet for right now, as far as distance is concerned. But we intend on getting that new device.
Perfect. Thank you.
Counselor Hartman.
Thank you. Yeah, I have a couple of things to touch on. And the questions I have are in section 8.12.0, the exceptions section. I know that on number seven, I'm sorry, excuse me, number eight, we call out the holiday Fourth of July. But I, I want to be clear with our community that there are other holidays that are, fireworks aren't set off, like New Year's or Chinese New Year. And so I just wanted to have a little discussion about, if we're going to call out the Fourth of July, we probably should talk about other holidays that we typically see fireworks. Otherwise, you know, this might, you know, give the opportunity for a citation. And then honestly, my personal opinion, I don't think that we should allow 7:00 AM time for fireworks on the holidays. Like, it could be like a start time of five to 11:00. So that's number one. And then the other one is 8.13, so number 13. And I know that the cumulative volume of normal speech of a group of people. I just want to make sure that we are still within this noise ordinance is protecting the people's First Amendment right to assemble and to protest. And so that might not be a, you know, a normal level of speech. And so I just want to make sure either it's there or number seven, where it says sounds created by community events, that those right to assemble is still within this exception as well. So those are my, my two things.
Thank you, Counselor. This ordinance is not intended to interfere with anybody's First Amendment right. And we're very, very, very clear on that here in Gladstone. We, everybody has, is awarded their First Amendment rights. So that, that, this ordinance itself isn't designed for that.
Sure.
So.
The other one was the holiday part. I don't know if that's a you, Chief Schreber, but just talking about, we're going to call out a holiday, maybe we should also talk about other holidays, yeah.
Sure. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Tracy.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any questions or comments, other than I will agree with Counselor Hartman. I think 7:00 AM is too loud for, or too early for, for fireworks. Looks like you guys did a lot of good work here. Appreciate you coming out researching this, these ordinances and bringing this back. As I read through the strike throughs, it seems that we were pretty outdated and we needed to do some adjusting. Day players being one of the items that was listed. So thank you very much for doing the work. And I think it looks like a fairly good ordinance going forward. Thanks.
All right, Counselor Ripley.
I have no questions.
All right. Anything else from staff?
Nothing further. Thank you.
All right. Would somebody like to make a motion then? This will be the first reading.
So I'll do it. It will be right here. Consider approval of ordinance 1513, an ordinance amending Gladstone Municipal Code, code chapter 8.12, to allow noise variance requests to be considered administratively.
Do I have a second? Motion was made by Counselor Alexander and seconded by Counselor Tracy. Do we have any additional questions or concerns or discussion?
I have one question.
Yes.
Does the, the new, I should have looked closer, my apologies. Does the new, the updated include an increase in, in the violation costs? I mean, is there?
Oh, under the violation section?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that, under the violation section, that, that remains at a, at a class A infraction, which is $720. So we, we carry that, but it also increases determining on the amount of, the amount of times this is violated. So, and it's really, it's, you know, for an example, you have a home that can constantly throw parties and keeps people up till three in the morning. And, and they're not changing. So this, this penalty addresses those types of issues too. And it also, because our city councillor, our city council, or not city council, I'm sorry, our city attorney, sorry Chad, our city attorney was looking at this. We did put in some, some recommendations for, for legal action we can take through the courts, as we move forward if need be. So.
Okay, so the, the fine amount remain the same with the new changes? With the exception of if you break the code more than one time? Is that what I'm hearing?
I'm sorry, I can't, Counselor, I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Okay, so what I'm asking, this is something that would come up. What I'm asking specifically is, are the, the fraction, the fine, does not, does not increase unless you are a second time offender?
Or a serial offender.
A serial.
That's correct. Yes.
That's all, that's all I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I also think for the record, to be clear, to have Counselor Alexander on eight dash two, read the actual title of the ordinance into the motion, because we are doing more than just changing it to be considered administratively.
Which is at the top of the?
So the top of it, an ordinance amending chapter 812 of the Gladstone Municipal Code pertaining to noise control and reaffirming all remaining provisions of the Gladstone Municipal Code.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
So I don't feel like we answered Counselor Hartman's question on the Fourth of July or the time that she was, because I'm, I'm a little concerned about being woken up at seven o'clock in the morning and fireworks also. But I'm not trying to, I mean, I know that our team has looked into this. I just don't want to not talk about something that two people brought up specifically.
I think they're just stating that daytime is between 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM. Is that saying that we can do fireworks between 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM?
But this is to 11:00.
Oh, I'm just reading back over here on eight dash four, what daytime means.
Oh, okay.
I think they're just specifying what is daytime.
Mayor?
Yes.
Is this conversation about a noise ordinance or about the Fourth of July and fireworks?
It's noise ordinance.
Right. So fireworks, mowing your grass, starting your car, all that stuff makes noise. I don't think this ordinance is saying we're going to go out and do fireworks seven in the morning. It's saying, don't start your lawnmower before seven in the morning.
Right, right. So I think under definitions on page eight dash four, where it says daytime, consistently throughout the ordinance, we're referring to daytime as 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM.
Yep.
So that is why any daytime activity is called out 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, to be consistent throughout the ordinance.
This goes to 11:00.
Yeah, the, in 8.12, the exception that sounds made by legal fireworks on Fourth of July holiday between hours of 7:00 and 11:00 PM. So we've, we've extended it by an hour. So why can't we change the 7:00 AM to a later time? Because this is, this is an exception. So it's just saying that I can wake up after being annoyed from fireworks and like, set off a firework at eight and I'm not going to go to citation.
Well, you can actually only set off fireworks during certain times of the year, I believe.
Yes.
I know you can only sell fireworks during certain times of the year. But if, if you change this to nine or 10, I couldn't mow my grass at seven, because this is a noise ordinance, not a firework ordinance. Correct?
Right. We're, we, we call it out, though. Like, we call out as an exception that people can set off legal fireworks on specifically Fourth of July between 7:00 and 11:00. Like, that's what the words say.
I think Chad, you wanted to say something? I keep seeing your.
Yeah, Counselor Hartman said exactly what I was going to say. So the, there's a general prohibition about making noises. And then we create exceptions. And one of the exceptions that we create is that if you are setting off legal fireworks on the Fourth of July between 7:00 AM and 11:00 PM, the ordinance does not apply. So it has nothing to do with your lawnmower or anything else. We're just creating a specific exception for legal fireworks on the Fourth of July. So the question to you all is twofold. One, did you want to expand this to other holidays besides just the Fourth of July? And two, are setting off legal fireworks on those days between the hours of 7:00 AM and 11:00 PM, the appropriate hours that you all would like to adopt?
All right, Counselor Garlington.
Well, I just, I, I guess one of the things that I'm concerned about is that Fourth of July fireworks are clearly a hot topic in Gladstone, period.
Yes.
And I don't want any letters in my mailbox about this tomorrow.
Yep.
So, you know, the other time that we hear fireworks is New Year's Eve. That's midnight. People, maybe they save them. I don't, you know, and, and that kind of thing. I guess I'm just a little on the fence with this. I, I'm not sure what, what Counselor Hartman would like it to say, but I'm open to listening to what that might be.
Counselor Alexander.
Oh, I don't, I don't know. I live next door to a business. Seven o'clock, I'm hearing it every morning. Seven o'clock, I hear noise. So it doesn't matter to me. I mean, I hear loud noises every morning.
Counselor Tracy.
I, again, it's, to their point, it's an exception. So we have a choice of leaving it in as an exception. That's the way I see it. Or we're going to go ahead and modify the timeframe. Going back to Counselor Garlington's point, New Year's Eve fireworks are at midnight. So I, so I don't know how the ordinance applies anyway, if the ordinance has ever been enforced on New Year's Eve in this city. Has the police department gone around and written tickets for noise ordinance violations on New Year's Eve at midnight? I, I mean, I, I don't know. I think we're kind of getting way down in the weeds here.
Yeah.
On one exception for a, an ordinance, a sound ordinance.
Yep. Counselor Ripley.
I think I agree with what Matt just said. We're way off in the weeds.
All right. Well, we have a motion on the table to accept it as written. And it was made by Counselor Alexander and seconded by Counselor Tracy. Do either of you want to amend it or move it forward as written?
I'm moving forward as written.
Is that all right?
It's not that big of a concern. I just don't.
Counselor Tracy, is that all right?
Yeah, I'm good with that, because I think that we're going to be enforcing it based on complaint anyway at different levels.
Yeah. All right. Then Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Tracy.
Hi.
Counselor Hartman.
Hi.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Mayor Stempel.
Yes. So it was unanimous. So we can move forward with the second reading. Would someone like to do the second reading, please?
I'll do it again.
All right.
I, I motion that we adopt the ordinance amending chapter 8.12 of the Gladstone Municipal Code pertaining to noise control and reaffirming all remaining provisions of the Gladstone Municipal Code.
Do I have a second?
I'll second again.
Thank you, Counselor Tracy. Motion was made by Counselor Alexander, seconded by Counselor Tracy. Do we have any further discussion, questions or concerns? I don't see any. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Tracy.
Hi.
Counselor Hartman.
Hi.
Counselor Garlington.
Yeah.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Mayor Stempel.
Yes, ordinance has been approved. Next is item number nine. Yes.
Can I put a motion on the table and take a five-minute recess? I need to get the frost off my body.
All right, we're going to take a five-minute break until, I can't even read the clock, 8:40, 8:42.
7:42.
7:42. I'm sorry. I don't have, I can't see that far. All right. So we're back. Okay, next is item number nine, Community Development Block Grant, also referred to as a CDBG, excuse me, CDBG, intergovernmental agreement, referred to as an IGA between Clackamas County and the City of Gladstone for ADA ramps in Gladstone. Staff?
And city council. This is a great project, a great collaboration, where we received money from Clackamas County to do specific projects in Gladstone. Your Public Works Director, Darren Cana-Piroli, is going to give you a brief summary of the staff report and where we plan on putting the new ADA ramps.
Thank you, Jackie. In 2019, the city applied for an ADA sidewalk improvement grant with Clackamas County. On September, September 28th of this year, the city was awarded $100,000 Community Development Block Grant for this project. The scope of this project was to target at high-impact areas that would be most beneficial to the, to the residents. We looked at several areas. We looked at the ADA ramps at Oakfield and Webster, but felt they did not get the foot traffic that other areas get. We looked at the ADA ramps at Portland Avenue and Abernathy, but with all the bike lane improvements, it would take most, if not all, of the money for the one project. We also looked at the ADA ramps at Portland Avenue and Barclay, but since we will be doing a storm project in that area, we would include them in the, in that project. It was determined that the ADA ramps around John Wetton Elementary would fit this criteria. The ramps to be replaced, if money allows, are the four ramps at Chicago Avenue and East Gloucester, two ramps at Harvard Avenue and East Fairfield, three ramps at Harvard Avenue and East Exeter. The Community Development Block Grant is a matching funds grant that requires the city to match 20% of the total amount of the grant. This $20,000 will come out of the Streets Fund. We have catch basins that will need to be realigned for this project. We have budgeted $30,000 out of, $30,000 out of the Storm Fund. Option one, accept the IGA with Clackamas County for the Community Development Block Grant and proceed with the ADA grant, ADA sidewalk improvement project. Option two, not to exceed, not to accept the IGA and decline the Community Development Block Grant for the ADA sidewalk improvement project. Staff recommends approving the IGA with Clackamas County for the Community Development Block Grant and proceed with the ADA sidewalk improvement project. Any questions?
All right, Counselor Garlington.
So it just dawned on me that the two that are on the school property, is, is that exactly where that path goes on the, this side of the ball fields and that side of the swing set?
Those are actually in the city right away. They are not on school property.
Okay.
We would, we would encroach a little bit on school property to get both of those completed, but they're technically in the city right away.
Okay. Well, I guess my. Okay, well, I guess my question is, how is, is that path in good working order or does that need to be addressed in any way? I kind of forgot in my mind.
Yeah, that, that path is actually school property. We, we don't have any, the city does not have anything to do with that, that pathway.
Okay.
And the funds can't be used on the city or the school property.
Okay. I suppose.
Council Alexander.
Just, I guess, so, so the $100,000 we get from Clackamas County, the 20% with our 20,000, that covers all these ramps you have listed here. Is that correct? And I mean, is there going to be like, like Matt was talking about earlier? Is there going to be, now it's, it's going to cost a little more, the concrete and rebar, uh, materials is, is that going to cover it? Are we going to have to look for some more money down the road a bit?
Uh, no. So the, the plan is, is we will get bids back. And the way that we are bidding the project or the way that we're having the county bid the project is to separate out everything so that we have a better understanding of what each basically line item will cost. The plan is to go forward with all of the um, the, the ADA ramps, but there could be a chance depending on how the bids come back that we would have to exclude uh, one or more, uh, which is why we're actually adding money out of the Storm Fund to not impact the, the street fund and the actual project to be able to get it the most done that we can get done.
And are any of these catch basins right in the same proximity of the ADA ramp? Are we going to do them at the same time? Get a bid for that or is the city doing them? How's that work?
That, that will be included in the, as a bid item in the bid. Uh, they're, most of them are right out in front of where the ADA, well, actually all of them are where the ADA ramps actually coming in to, and so we're talking about shifting a, a catch basin a couple feet one direction or the other.
Okay, thank you.
Right, Council Hartman.
Thank you. Um, question in regards, I know that it said that there's a match that the matching funds are required. Is the match not for up to 100,000?
So, so the total project cost is, is $100,000 that was granted to us. We have to match that 20%.
Oh, I see. Okay. Um, and then curious, are like painting of the crosswalks? Is that something we could be able to do as well? Like since it's a school, the crosswalk lines are fading, you know, if we're going to do these ADA ramps, will that also be included in this project?
No, that would be separate from this project and that would be taken from the city O and M budget. We would do that ourselves.
Okay. Um, and the last question is, when will this project get started?
The, the funds have to be spent before June 30th of this year. So the project would start pretty much right away. If the IGA is approved, it would have to go through the, the county council. Um, and then realistically after that, it could start, the, the county will go out for bids. Uh, they will get the bids and the contractor could start at any point. We're kind of targeting March, late March um, to get this done, preferably during spring break, but that's obviously weather depending. Um, but the funds have to be, uh, expensed by, uh, June 30th.
Of 2022, right?
Uh, 2022, correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Council Tracy.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the only thing that I'm thinking of here is that our last, uh, our last foray down the CDBG path, uh, didn't turn out that great for us with regard to the contractor. So I'm assuming the county must have learned from their prior experience there too. And do we have some assurances on the, on the contractor? Or are we paying attention to that, I guess, as we're going forward?
We are paying attention to that, yes.
Okay. I, I, I would assume that's where we're headed, right, Director? We're, we're paying attention to that.
Yes.
Okay.
I, I, I know what you're referring to and, and so Public Works will be doing all the inspection and everything with that project. Um, the county actually hires, they, they do all the bidding for the project. Uh, we do have say in who we select as a bidder for that project. Uh, ultimately, though, we do all the inspections to make sure that everything is up to the, uh, public work standards within that contract.
Okay, I think the risk is, is less obviously than taking out two blocks of a neighborhood residential street. These are just, uh, the pads and the, the ramps. So I just want to remind ourselves that we, that was a stressful time. Thank you.
Knock on wood because you never know what they're going to come up with. It'll make this go sideways. Council Ripley. So I have a question. Are they moving the IGAs through quicker now? Because I don't want that to hold up our project since we have a deadline. Yeah, they've been really good about getting items through their agendas as well. So I'm feeling pretty confident this early in the process that we'll be able to, to move forward on the project. And also just want to remind everybody, we had a work session last month on our streets and pavement strategy. And we were asked, do we ever go out to get grant funds to do projects? And this is an example of when we do get grant funding to try to leverage projects in Gladstone. But yes, we will make sure to move the IGA through their process. Okay, great. Any other questions? Would someone like to make a motion then, please?
Well, I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County Department of Health, Housing and Human Service Community Development Division and the City of Gladstone and proceed with the Gladstone ADA and sidewalk improvement project.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion was made by Council Hart, Hartman and seconded by Council Alexander. Do we have any additional questions or concerns? I don't see any. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Council Hartman.
Hi.
Council Tracy. Council Alexander.
Yes.
Council Ripley. Council Garlandon.
Yes.
Mayor Stempel.
Yes. It has passed. Next is item number 10. Approval of an agreement between St. Vincent de Paul and Gladstone to distribute American Rescue Plan Act funds, which are also referred to as ARPA, to the Gladstone residents staff. Thank you, Mayor. As you recall, we had a work session in September about potential uses of the American Rescue Plan funding. One that we had mentioned to you is to try to get money out to low income residents that have a need as soon as possible. We had a relationship with St. Vincent de Paul. Our finance consultant Kathy Brucker is joining us tonight to take you through the brief staff report. And with your permission, then we would like to move forward with dispersing the funds. Kathy?
Thank you, Jackie. Yes, as we have presented to the council regarding the ARPA funds, this is the first actual expenditure of the funds that we would like to ask for approval to make. This is a, once again, a, an agreement with St. Vincent de Paul as we did with the Caris funding. And as you know, it's a very successful project. We were able to provide the council with some really good information on that. So we've currently got over a million three in the bank that we're ready to move forward with. This is a, um, project of 100,000. It would be advanced in $10,000 increments based on the same type of contract as we had with them earlier, as I say. The one thing that I did want to, uh, be sure and discuss on here as far as the eligibility for assistance with this is just the same as what we currently have with our low income assistance with the city. And it's based on the housing and urban development income limits for very low income, which is basically 50% of the median family income for the Portland Hillsborough Vancouver area. So it's a, it's a very uh, well-used basis. And to give you an idea for a family of one, it allows income up, up to 33,850 in the year. For a family of eight, where it caps out at eight, it allows for income of over 63,000, almost 64,000 in a year. So once again, if an applicant qualifies for this, this would be able to be used for any type of utility payments that they're delinquent on or needing assistance with for housing, not only rent, but also mortgage payments or deposits if they're having to move to a new location. And also food assistance in the form of box, food boxes provided by St. Vincent de Paul. All funds for this are paid directly to the service provider. Uh, they don't come to the city. We don't have to get into the middle of anything. It only comes to the city if it is one, you know, our utility or something. But other than that, they take care of it and they've, you know, I, I can't see enough of that how, um, reputable they have been to work with. So anyways, with all of this, we'd like to, uh, ask for approval of the contract as you have submitted there. If it's not approved, needless to say, the funds could be utilized for something else under the ARPA guidelines, but we have no really other funding that would be available for use of this. So we are asking that, uh, we're recommending the approval of the agreement between the city and St. Vincent de Paul to provide 100,000 of funding for residents in need of assistance, uh, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, utilizing this ARPA funding and all through December of 2026.
All right, questions? Council Garlandon.
I have one. It says on here that there is a limit to how much people can get. And I remember that there was a limit before. So
Yes.
It's an all new, everybody's on a clean slate or does it take into consideration their last disbursements?
It's absolutely a clean slate. It is for a limit up to $1,000, but there would be no bearing on what they had received under the Caris funding.
Good, thank you.
Council Alexander.
I think it's a great, great program. I just, um, so the City of Gladstone pays a 5% administrative fee to?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so that's all, all our only costs. So that's, can't beat that, I don't think.
No, that is actually half of what you typically would pay somebody to administer a program for you.
That's what I say. We can't beat it. That's
Yeah.
Awesome.
All right, Council Hartman.
Yes, my, my only question is, why aren't childcare costs included as something that someone could utilize this money for?
The childcare costs are something entirely separate within ARPA. It's not part of this program itself. Uh, we had, as far as childcare administrating of cost, St. Vincent de Paul does not do that. And so it, it would be an entirely separate program we'd have to set up.
Okay, so the program is just energy and home assistance and then, okay. Add food.
Yeah, so there is food there.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Council Tracy. Council Ripley.
No questions.
All right, anything else from staff?
Nope, thank you.
All right, would someone like to make a motion, please?
For mayor, I'll move to step, uh, that council approves the agreement between the city and St. Vincent de Paul provide $100,000 of funding for residents in need of assistance due to the COVID-19 pandemic utilizing the ARPA funding received through December 2026.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion was made by Council Tracy and seconded by Council Garlandon. Do we have any additional questions or concerns? I don't see any. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Council Garlandon.
Yes.
Council Ripley.
Yes.
Council Alexander.
Yes.
Council Tracy.
Hi.
Council Hartman.
Hi.
Mayor Stempel.
Yes. Wonderful, thank you. It's a great program. I'm glad that we're continuing it.
Thank you so much.
Thanks Kathy. All right, next is number 11, discussion with the council on committee vacancy appointment process. Staff. This snuck up on us so fast this year. We can't believe we're already at the end of our year. And basically, we just wanted to have a conversation. We're already out advertising for applications. As you can see, we've got two terms on planning commission, three on budget committee, which really there's not a lot to do on budget committee because we're in a biennial budget. There's two openings on traffic safety, one on the senior center and one on the audit committee. We're advertising until November 30th. Just wanted to have a conversation. If you would like us to just put the applications in your December 14th packet and you appoint them at that meeting like you have done in the past. Or if you wanted to do something different in regards to interviews, which would require a time commitment by the city counselors. We just needed to get that clarity at this meeting. So we know after the closing date what the next step is in the appointment process. Right, Council Garlandon.
Um, I would like to nix the interview. I just had some reservations about that. So I, I'm happy to read all the applications, all the information on the applications and appoint as they have been for many, many, many years in the City of Gladstone. My two cents.
Thank you. Council Alexander.
I got a question. Administrator?
Yes.
Do we have anybody that has applied for anything or waiting to be on anything yet?
I think we have one application that's been submitted. But that is it.
Okay, because I sort of think I got to agree with, uh, Council Garlandon. If you, if you put up, you know, you've got to, got to make it to an interview and you've got to, you know, like, I mean, and, and we've done but before videos and stuff. I mean, those things, I, I think, I think if someone just kind of volunteer and they put it in the pack and we can read their, their resume, that's good enough for me.
Right, Council Hartman.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I'm kind of on the opposite. I really enjoyed the videos. I think it shows commitment and time and it was nice to get to know folks through those videos. And, um, I think it's just an added layer of accountability. Uh, I, I encourage lots of people to apply. I think it's great. Uh, but I started, I personally, um, did like having the videos, maybe not like the in-person interviews, that being able to watch that on our own time.
Right, Council Tracy.
I, I guess I don't have to comment on the interviews at all. Um, but again, we're we're seemingly always challenged to get some of these folks to, to step up and volunteer. I'd like to give them kind of a loose path of assistance. And I thought that the application process, last time around, we got a lot of information from the application process. So I was, I was kind of happy with that. Nothing further.
Okay, Council Ripley.
You know, whether it's an interview process or more of a meet and greet, I think that allows you to to better know who you're, who you're talking to and how you differentiate between one person and another person. I think right now with the COVID and everything else going on, I don't think that's going to work very well. So if there are open positions, I think I would agree with with Council Tracy that we need to, we need to have a clear, nice easy path to fill the positions.
All right. And just to add on to that, when you get the applications, you can call any of them you want to and ask them questions in addition to if that's something that you need as an individual to do. Good, that's good to know. Yeah. So do you want a formal vote or does this give you direction? Um, did you have a preference? Um, I think just the, the applications is fine. Okay, so it looks like the majority of fine, just appointing at the meeting. And if you have questions of the applicant, you can do your homework ahead of time. Sounds good. Yep. All right, awesome. Thank you. Do we have any business carried forward? I have nothing. All right, so business from the audience.
The first will be Leslie Myers.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Okay.
So I signed up to talk about the land acknowledgement for Native Americans. And in Gladstone, we were proud of some of the symbolism of the indigenous people that lived here. Even our town symbol is the powwow tree. We know about several of the tribes that used to live around here, the Clackamas, Malala, Willamette, many other tribes. We also know about the history of trauma that came out of colonization that led to the deaths of millions of people around the world. Multiple indigenous people through massacre, through illness like smallpox, by slavery. In actually, speaking of massacres, at Wounded Knee, the army did their first experiment using machine guns. There is something that many people don't know about, and that is called the doctrine of discovery. And that's where the Pope declared, there, announced that the colonial powers were to capture, vanquish and subdue indigenous peoples. And they did that well. And this country was also a thing called the rule of the land. And that meant that there were no people here prior to the colonists coming. There were no people. That was the rule. And if any Native Americans were left, they were to be assimilated, and that means getting rid of their culture, religion, language, music, ceremony, removing anything that helped them have an identity. And how did they do that? One of the things they did was establish Indian schools. Remember how horrified we were when the ex-president removed children, baby? That's what here.
All right, time's up.
That's what happened in this.
Thank you very much.
Next, I can't say about landing. Next is Vanessa Huckabee.
Hi, everybody. I'll be leaving my video off this evening. Good evening, city councillors and mayor. My name is Vanessa and I am a longtime Gladstone resident. I spent the afternoon of October 12th enjoying Clackamas County's celebration of Indigenous Peoples' Day. It was a proud day for our county, our local indigenous peoples and our very own councillor, Vanessa Hartman. Organizers honored Vanessa with her reading one of two land acknowledgements. It was beautiful and everything about it just felt right. I transitioned into the evening with watching our city council meeting. Wow, what a day and night difference. I refer to the latter as night because what we witnessed was dark. The actions of four of our council members were rooted in ignorance, implied racism, laziness and honestly hate. Vanessa and the Indigenous-led task force worked hard for eight months on the creation of a land acknowledgement. This was not rushed. This is not some unheard of practice or something that is undeserving of your attention. The fact that four of you sitting on the council have never done your due diligence to learn why land acknowledgements are needed and important is quite concerning to me. One big lesson learned by people making a conscious effort to become an ally for our BIPOC neighbors is that it is not up to them to teach us the whys and the hows. Most of us understand and respect this because we are intentional with our efforts to learn. I don't want to be a lazy learner. I want to be an active one. So I'm going to help a little bit. Let's start with Mindy's question of, we're not giving the land back, so is it all for naught? The Art Institute of Chicago explains that a land acknowledgement is a formal statement that recognizes indigenous peoples as the longstanding occupants and caretakers of a particular land or region. It is an offering of respect for the enduring relationships that exist between them and their traditional territories. Mindy, it is important to understand the history of the lands we occupy and our white people's place within that history. Indigenous people are still here and must be included in all decisions regarding what happens on these lands. There were more cop-outs of needing more information or that this was going to cause a massive amount of administrative work. It quite literally is already written for you. Thanks to Vanessa and the task force, there is no work left to be done. I timed the acknowledgement that Vanessa read at approximately 52 seconds. You voted down something of such significant importance stating various reasons, including time. Do you really believe that less than one minute of your time is more important than honoring the original caretakers of this land? That is pretty selfish. I can't begin to explain how poorly this reflected on the council. If these meetings were in person, you could have heard the gasps, seen the headshakes of disapproval and the looks of complete.
Time's up, Vanessa. Thank you.
Faces.
Next.
Sorry. Next is Kathy Way.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great, okay, I think I'll go. Well, hi, everyone. Good evening. For the record, my name is Kathy Way and I currently serve on the North Clackamas School Board. I want to just thank you all for your commitment to public service and allowing me to testify this evening. There is a letter that has been sent by about 27 elected officials from our statewide school board local leaders that are attached in your packet, so I will be reading that letter for the record. Sheriff Gladstone City Councillors, as elected officials representing parts of our state and cities in Oregon, we recognize our native tribal and indigenous communities who have inhabited these lands since time immemorial. We commend the efforts of the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners in acknowledging and adopting a land acknowledgement last month in recognition of honoring Indigenous Peoples' Day. We are disappointed, however, that the Gladstone City Council decided to vote against this important acknowledgement. The council missed a significant opportunity to recognize native and indigenous communities, especially since the city of Gladstone and Clackamas rests on the traditional lands of the Kalapuya, Chinook, Malala and Clackamas peoples. You have the responsibility to ensure that all voices of the community feel safe, seen and heard. We also write to support and recognize the efforts of councillor Vanessa Hartman, who have spent much of her time working on the land acknowledgement with other community leaders. With November being a nationally recognized Native American Heritage Month, this is again, a significant opportunity to adopt a land acknowledgement. From our state legislative efforts to the local boards that we all serve on, land acknowledgements have been adopted and even displayed on websites or read prior to meetings. This creates an opportunity for more awareness and education about the contributions of the Native American community in the past and in the current time. We all have a role in the healing and revitalizing of our native and indigenous communities. Land acknowledgements are a first step in addressing the history of colonization, genocide and forced removal. It is a step towards healing and reconciliation for current and future generations and for both non-native and native people to participate in. We urge you to reconsider your decision and approve the resolution to adopt the land acknowledgement. Again, thank you for your service and time this evening.
Thank you. Next.
I have no additional speakers.
All right, the next is. I'm sorry, I, I just want to make sure into the record because you all received emails this evening. And at the end of this meeting, we will scan these documents and post them on the city's website with the agenda. But we also received a letter from the East Multnomah County Board Chairs regarding the adoption of the land acknowledgement for Gladstone City Council. So I want to make sure everybody got this one that was sent to you today. And then also, the Oregon School Board members of Color Caucus also sent a similar letter regarding the adoption of the land acknowledgement for the Gladstone City Council. And we received a letter from Ciara Cook and we weren't sure if she was going to be here tonight to read it, but I just wanted to reassure the public that the city council has received these documents.
Yep, and as, as councillor or administrator Beth said, they'll be scanned and they'll be included in the council information on the website. All right, next is business from the council. Councilor Garland.
Let's see. I listened to a really interesting school board meeting this last month. I will have to say, I to say that it got heated was an understatement. It was rather interesting and I was, I was shocked, quite frankly, and I, I think that if people get a chance to look at that, that would be something to go back and take a peek at. I went on at the Clackamas County Library Meeting. We are continuing to work on the library standards and where the Oak Lodge and Gladstone Libraries sit with those. And then I, I would just like to say one thing about something that Ms. Huckabee said, and I do believe that part of my statement was that, yes, I'd like to put that on the 2022 list of, you know, things that we'd like to accomplish. So I, I feel a little bit like it was a like pick and choose about what you want to say because I did say that I would like to, you know, work at getting that there. I'm that's all, thanks.
All right, Council Alexander.
I just want to say, let's, ladies on to the police and fire and Chief Huffman, you know, he's just grinding away at work and I'm getting the police department everything you can get done for him and try to hire new people. And Chief Smurber and, and the police department are doing a great job of keeping us safe, watching our city. And congratulations on the new truck, you guys. And just want to wish everyone a happy Veterans Day and happy Thanksgiving because I don't think we'll see you before then.
All right, Council Hartman.
Thank you. Um, yes, so our last month was really busy, but we attended the League of Oregon Cities Conference last month and just to share with the community that I was elected to serve on the board of the newly formed Women's Caucus as well as nominated and appointed for the Secretary of People of Color Caucus as well. So I'm super excited to be a part of both of those groups. There's some amazing people that are serving on those boards and I've already learned so much from them and I'm looking forward to sharing these learnings with our community. I also attended a session with the counties called Clackamas Courage, which is a group that is trying to develop a new equity-oriented organizing table for Clackamas County. And then we also, or went in a discussion, a work session around restorative practices within Clackamas County and how we can apply those to our everyday decisions. And if you are unfamiliar with restorative justice or practice, I highly suggest you do some Google research and see how that might apply to your everyday decisions. I, I wanted to also say thank you to all the businesses that came together and put on a wonderful Halloween extravaganza. It was really nice to see all the kids out and laughter. And the only question I have for staff that I keep getting is when are we going to see results from the investigation? It has been several months now and people keep asking me about it, so I would like to ask that now.
Do you want me to take that one, Jackie?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so it should be forthcoming. I've, I've received some initial communications from the investigator. It took her a while for several reasons. One, as I've mentioned to you previously, she had a a personal family issue come up during the course of the investigation. And second, she had trouble getting some responses from some of the participants. So I would say within the next couple of weeks, we should have the results of the investigation.
Thank you. That is all I have.
All right, Council Tracy.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to try to read this through shivers. This is our city value statement. City council and staff of the city of Gladstone believe our priority is to be transparent in our work and fiscally responsible with public money. Here are pride and volunteers that give time and effort into making this community more beautiful, sustainable and culturally rich. We respect and trust our community organizations and governmental partners that keep us diverse and value and cherish, excuse me, value and cherish the unfiltered debate between citizens. These staff and city government over challenges and opportunities that come our way, these are things that we value and cherish. We appreciate how citizens advocate to others about this place we call home. I'm encouraged to hear Council Garland say that she would like to address the land acknowledgement issue in 2022. I think we missed our mark though with the land acknowledgement. I don't know why we couldn't just bring it to the table, have the discussion, do the, educate ourselves, educate our community, work together to figure out that it would be a good idea for us to go ahead and acknowledge this land. Because quite frankly, this is one of the, my understanding is one of the highest density populations of the indigenous folks in this state of Oregon. We're right here at the confluence of the two rivers. I, I think it's willfully ignorant for us to, again, as one of our citizens, adopt the cultural and, and assimilate the cultural richness of the indigenous peoples along these rivers while turning our back to acknowledging the folks that came before us on this land. So I appreciate Council Garland wanting to, to address this. I think we should address it sooner than that. I, I would move to say that we should go back to having a discussion possibly in December, but I felt like it was necessary to read the value statement because the last sentence is, we appreciate how citizens advocate to others about this place we call home. I'm not out advocating right now about Gladstone to a lot of folks because I feel like Gladstone's, we're doing better right now, but Gladstone's still kind of broken. So I think maybe we should all go back and revisit our value statement. And maybe we should bring that discussion to the table and talk about how we can preserve the cultural differences, the diversity, the trust we have, the open and unfiltered debate that hopefully doesn't become acerbic and, and attacks between all of us and our citizens. I think we just need to revisit this in general and I'll leave it at that, but I appreciate Council Garland if you seriously do want to move forward with this.
I, I said that before. I said, all I, my concern was and has been that the staff are starting to all go on vacation. We had a list of things that we were, that we discussed in January about what our top priorities of getting things done were. And I didn't.
Acknowledgement, though. I, I appreciate that, but again, everybody has pointed out, there was no really, there's no word involved. It's an acknowledgement. We have read, I sat there meeting after meeting where we have honored Happy Bouncing Ball Day, Happy Cupcake Day, you know, ad nauseam in our, in our live meetings. And I appreciate that, Mayor, but why not honor the folks who live on this property and this land prior to us? I just don't understand. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Council Ripley.
Not to disagree with, with Council Tracy here, but if it was that important of something, I'd never heard of it before. And the little research, I didn't do much research, because right when I started, I see things about land grab, about land takeback, about lawsuits. And I don't want to make a decision that could, and whether it has any to do with it or not, or is this going to be a tool that somebody uses later? I don't want to be involved in that decision that could have a negative impact on people in our town who, them, their parents, their grandparents, their great-grandparents, none of these people were responsible for this stuff. But people still want, don't laugh, Matt.
I'm sorry.
And let me tell you, the complaining about this stuff is getting so old. I've, I've never complained about my heritage. My mom's never complained about her heritage. Well, yeah, I know, but I'm just, there's a reason why I didn't agree with it. My grandma was born on a reservation. My aunt and one uncle were born on a reservation. My mom was born. My aunt and one uncle were born on a reservation. My mom was born in Seattle. I don't use my heritage as something that I could use as a leverage tool or as a commodity. It's nobody else's business what I am, because if I want to continue to look at the past, I'm not going to get anywhere forward. Whatever happened back then, it happened. There's nothing we can do about it. But there's no reason why I should take, because I am a Native American. I shouldn't take it out on you. You did nothing to me. But see, that's why people are hesitant towards this type of stuff, because every time you turn around, somebody's trying to pull a fast one, and you never know what to believe.
I appreciate that, Counselor Ripley, but I think actually, when you're acknowledging somebody's presence, it's not, you're not acknowledging their presence for a leverage.
But it's in all the history, but so why is it so important? And why haven't we heard about it?
It's important to understand our history.
Yes, I agree that 100%. Yes.
So it's important to understand our history. Part of it is the educational component in understanding our history. I think it became more of a personal issue here.
Yeah.
And so I'm just asking that we revisit it. I'm not admonishing, except for the fact that we do, we do identify and recognize a lot of things that may not be asked. I personally don't feel like it's a leverage.
I think people will use it as a leverage. Some people will. Will use it as a leverage point. But we can't, we have to look forward. We can't. We need the past, we need history to keep us from making mistakes in the future. And our brains do the same thing. Everything we do, we see our brain store that information to know how to make movements in the future. That's, we don't have memories, so we'd have memories. It's all data for our brains. But, you know, when it's in all the history books, and everybody knows, we have a plaque down at the powwow tree about the last powwow down there. So everybody knows that this was the Indians' area. So why all of a sudden do we want to put something? It's like we want a legal documentation of us saying, yes, we accept, we're saying that this was your land. We all know it was, but why is that all of a sudden so important? I just raised red flags with me that I said, I've never heard about, and all of a sudden, people say this is something we've got to do? Because it, to me, it's offensive to me when people start making comments about about American Indians, about natives, about indigenous people, in this whining mentality. Nobody in my family whines about where they came from.
Nobody is whining. Nobody is whining whatsoever. And you talk about history. History is important. Yes, we can agree on that. The Kalapulua, Clackamas, and Chinook natives were not a part of this, this, what we call Gladstone. That history is not taught. You can ask, I might ask 10 people, whose land, whose land was this before the colonizers came and pushed them out? You see the project that's going on with the Lemon Falls and the Grand Ronne Reservation? That is a sacred ceremonial site. Did you know that? Probably not, because no, we were not a part of history. And I'm not even from these lands. I'm not from here. My ancestors are not from here. It is important because indigenous people have not been recognized. And do not use, bring up the fact now that you are Native as fact, as that you have a place in this discussion. You, of all people, if you are Native American, should see the honor in this, to honor the fact.
It's embarrassing. Honestly, it's embarrassing to me, but that's, we're different people. I have different views.
Yes.
So
We do. But you know what? I'm not sitting there saying it's embarrassing that you show up in pajamas to the council meeting. I'm not sitting here saying it's embarrassing that you choose to scarf Pete the dog on camera. This is talking about people who still live here.
Point of order, point of order.
Yeah, no, this is Counselor
He can say it's embarrassing that I want to bring honor. I want to bring honor to the indigenous people. Jesus.
Well, I just want to say, so if that's the case, what we just heard, then Counselor Ripley is the first indigenous person on the Gladstone City Council.
I would bet there's been others.
Okay, I'm just saying, I don't know how, you know, it got to that she was the first, but if you're indigenous, you were elected before her, and it could have been more before that.
We never know.
We don't. So, but I'd be careful on the statements, then, is what I
Somebody make a motion to adjourn the meeting, please?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. I make a motion.
Do I have a second? Motion was made by Counselor Alexander, seconded by Counselor Garland to adjourn the meeting. Any further discussion? Could you draw a call vote, please?
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Yes.
Counselor Hartman.
Aye.
Counselor Garland. Yeah. Mayor Stempel.
Yes, meeting's adjourned at 8:29 PM.